Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Getting, getting long.
I'm coming over with shears. I'm just kidding. I had a ponytail.
Said you look like Lin-Manuel Miranda. Yes.
I would, I would take that. I would 100% take that.
Why he said that? The ponytail just made me think of that.
I, I would take that. Anyway, I will call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, October 26, 2020 at 7:01 PM. I will begin with the roll.
Ronan.
Present.
All the person, Jerry.
Here.
All the person.
Here.
All the person Posey.
Here.
All the person Ricky.
Here.
All the person Ryan.
Here.
All the person Touche.
Here.
All the person Call is absent in excuse.
All right. Next, we have public comment. Mr. Sayer, there is anyone signed up for public comment?
Nope, nobody.
All right. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the October 12, 2020 Common Council meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by maybe Alder Ryan. Stans for corrections. Seeing no hands. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 12, 2020 Common Council meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, there is one item, which is the presentation of the 2020 Epic Grant Awards. I understand Mr. Sayer is going to promote someone to a panel.
Right, because I think it's fair. I think you're presenting, so I want to promote you.
Hi there. Greetings, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for having me here, and I'm absolutely delighted. I know this is kind of an annual tradition that we do here at Epic. This is my first time. And I can tell you that while I haven't been long at Epic, I've been really, really impressed with every interaction that we've had with the city. And I want to thank you all for, and all of your staff, for all the great long-term relationship that we've had. I'm not going to go through every single one of the grants this year, but suffice it to say that all these issues are near and dear to Epic's heart and support the community that we, we are part of and hopefully will move the needle. Whether polling stations or safety issues for police and fire, health issues, feeding the community through Brad, that quarry, or even environmental issues, making sure that ambulances don't idle. These are all things that we've held dear out at Epic and very, very happy to support the city's efforts in helping the community. So, thank you very much.
Um, you have the city. Thank you so much. And I will continue my mission to get people not to put Epic in all caps. You're real, real close this time.
Thank you.
There was one or two, but like, I used to work at Epic, and it's like, it's not an acronym.
It's a thing. Yeah.
Alder Kemp.
Yes. I just wanted to say to Sayer, thank you for everything that Epic has done for the city. I hope to continue the partnership with, with Epic. And these grants are important to us, so we'd like to keep working and hopefully even expanding them. I also want to mention to the council that Sayer was actually a professor of mine at UW Law School way back in 2007 or '08 for an estate planning course. So, maybe he's the reason I'm sitting here now. I don't know, but it's good to see you again.
Good to see you too. I thought I recognized your name.
Yeah, well, not the face anymore, so.
Well, you know, you got the hats and the, you know.
Small world. Uh, any other comments from the council? Seeing no hands? Again, thank you so much. And like I said, I look forward to seeing the city and Epic continue to work well in the future.
Same here. Have a good night.
You too. All right, next we'll move on to item six, which is announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to item seven, the administrative report. Mr. Sayer.
I gave a few updates tonight. One item that I left off my report is we do have a public informational meeting that's going to be held virtually on Thursday, October 29th at 6:00 PM. That's for the Eastside Interceptor Project that's occurring here behind City Hall and along the Badger Mill Creek. So, I sent that out to the council. We also have a link for that on the city's website if you're interested in attending or kind of spreading the word about that, that meeting. We have a Plan Commission meeting on November 4th. We currently have three active public hearings for that agenda. That's for the project on Berkeley Road at 300 East Verona Avenue, and then also for Costco and the Verona Technology Park. The budget schedule, just so you can mark your calendars, is we're planning a committee of the whole meeting on November 9th at 6:30 PM. That's where we'll do the budget presentation, and then we'll have a Common Council meeting on November 16th at 7:00 PM. That's where we'll have the budget public hearing and potential adoption of the budget. So, just mark those on your calendars if you could. Once again, the 9th at 6:30, and then the 16th at 7 o'clock. A few more updates is, you know, we continue to monitor what's going on with COVID in the county and the state. One significant change, as I'm sure you saw on Facebook or on the news, was the library has kind of enclosed to in-person just because of the COVID spike that's occurring in Dane County. We'll continue to monitor that situation. I'm sure the library board is going to be discussing this at their next meeting as well. But we'll, we'll continue to monitor that, and, you know, they're still available for curbside pickup, so people do need books, materials, they once again can register online. They can call the number, and staff will meet them out there during regular hours so they can pick up their materials, but it is closed for in-person activities for the foreseeable future. Voting will continue to occur at the library on Election Day. That's a question I know Ellen's had today from a few people, just can we still, are we still voting at the library? Yes, you'll still be voting at the library if you normally vote the library, so it will be open for voting as a polling, polling location on the day of the election. Speaking of the elections, we currently have early voting occurring. It is occurring from Monday through Friday of this week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at City Hall. So, people are interested, they can walk in, and voting is taking place in the council chambers. Things are socially distanced, there is glass, there's hand sanitizer, it is a safe process. I voted today for myself personally, so it's, it's very simple, very quick, and when I voted, there was not a line, so it was, it was great. So, we encourage people to vote early. That cuts down a potential spread of COVID and also, you know, reduces the exposure risk to our election workers as well. So, once again, this week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at City Hall. And with that, those are the updates I had. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? I have one quick one. Can we put the voting information up on the Facebook page again? I think a lot of people are kind of on edge about the election process as it's going, and I think we might just have to say the same things over and over, just, you know, because I think it's a very reasonable question. If the library is closed, does that mean people still vote there? And we should just, you know, just tell people.
Sure, yeah. Ellen, I think you can probably do it tomorrow, or have Kayla do that? Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing no hands? Thank you. We'll move on to item eight, the engineer's report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So, the Eastside Interceptor Project, as Adam noted earlier, I have, I guess, some additional updates on that one. The contract has been executed by all parties. The virtual pre-construction conference was held on Thursday, last Thursday, October 22nd with the prime and subcontractors. Again, as Adam noted, a virtual public meeting is scheduled for October 29th. Information for the public meeting can be found under the project's link on the Public Works webpage. Construction is set to commence on November 2nd with minor activities. Installation of the underground sanitary sewer is not scheduled to start until early December. For the Well 6 Pumping Station Construction Project, the contractor, city staff, and AECOM had initial well startup meeting on October 8th. After that meeting, AECOM and city staff prepared an updated punch list of items to be completed, which has been submitted to the contractor along with a request to meet substantial completion by end of this week. City staff is working with the DNR to complete its final inspection to allow the well to be brought online once substantial completion items are addressed by the contractor. For the Woods at Cathedral Point Phase 1, most of the sidewalk has been poured, base course final grading is in progress, lot and terrace restoration is in progress, the detention basin grading is virtually complete. Hitting is scheduled, or was scheduled for last week. Work at County Highway M and Range Trail continues to be on hold until telecommunications and gas utilities are relocated. For the Harmony Hills Detention Basin Cleanup, the virtual public meetings were held on October 14th and 20th with assistance through the public library. Work is scheduled to begin during the first working week in November. And finally, for the North Main Street Storm Sur connection from TDS, as of last week, that work was nearly complete with the road open and remaining work anticipated to be completed by the end of last week with minor cleanup items potentially this week. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the engineer's report? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to item nine, committee reports. First up, we have 9A Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll start by making a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, nothing of any real controversy this, this week. There's a payment in the amount of, let's see here, sorry, old eyes, where did it go? All right. Oh, here we go. A payment to the Madison Metro Sewer District for our third quarter sewer usage in the amount of $307,212,42. There's a payment for, let's see, it's right here on the break, JT Engineering Incorporated for $13,126.75. It's for Services Woods at CP1. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but which pro, Adam, do you remember which project that was by any chance?
It's the Woods at Cathedral Point.
Okay, thank you. And then also finally, a payment in the amount of 2,000, or sorry, $3,524.49 for books, supplies, and so on and such, actually to one of the city credit cards.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? My motion passes. Alder Kemp.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion regarding Resolution Number R-20-042, approving the 2021 Fitch Verona EMS operating and capital budgets.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Posey. Alder Kemp.
Just for the sake of discussion, this is really formality. This is a budget that we actually have to approve every year, and we do every year. So, we really need to vote on it and get it through tonight.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number R-20-042, approving the 2021 Fitch Verona EMS operating and capital budgets, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? My motion passes. Anything further from finance?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 9B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Ricky.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to extend outdoor seating areas until Dane County allows indoor restaurant and bar capacity at 100%.
Motion by Alder Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alder Touche. Alder Ricky.
The explanation for this is that staff has received a request from the Hop House to modify the time period for the temporary outdoor seating and dining. In the previous approval, the Hop House and other businesses could use the outdoor area until the middle of November, but due to the continued Dane County restrictions on indoor capacities, staff is recommending modifications to the duration and specifically recommending approving the outdoor seating for Hop House, Toot and Kates, and Kahoots until the Dane County order is removed or indoor seating is allowed at 100% capacity.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Journey.
So, I'm just wondering if outdoor heating has also been discussed with that request, just out of curiosity, since we're getting into cold weather? If they're going to be putting up heaters or whatever.
Mr. Sayer.
I had heard of one looking at it. I don't know if they purchased them, but I knew one that was possibly looking at some options for heaters, but no, it hasn't explicitly been discussed. I know there's been rumblings of it, but I think, I think some people right now are just going to wait and see kind of what happens here. And I've also heard some heaters are challenging to get right now because a lot of places are buying heaters.
Alder Ricky.
I'm just wondering, that would not need to go through the city, would it?
Probably more of a fire code issue. Ultimately, if they buy them, we'd want to make sure they get placed in the correct location and that they get the right type, because I'm sure there's certain, and I'm not a fire expert, but I mean, I'm sure there's certain ones that have to meet a certain code from a commercial standpoint versus a residential standpoint, but it's more of a building fire code issue. But no, it would not, it would not go before a board of staff would just deal with that.
Yeah, I imagine if you look at the whole of the internet, there, I would guarantee there's some unsafe heaters, but I, I would just in general trust business owners to not want to burn their, burn their business down, and if they did have questions, I would definitely encourage them to talk to the fire department because they'll, they'll get it sorted out. Alder Posey.
Hey, quick question. I'm actually all for extending this, but I did want to add a question or put out there. Snow removal, when we start dealing with snow removal? I know Hop House has a lot of fencing, and, you know, I know obviously they'll take care of their area, but if our trucks are coming by and knocking snow into their fencing, and what are we going to run into ourselves? And just making sure everybody's on the same page.
Mr. Sayer.
Yeah, we're going to have to let them know, because I mean, we're not going to change our operations, so if, if somebody does have something out there, we're going to, we're going to make sure they know that when we plow the streets, we're, we're going to keep plowing the streets as we do, and they may need to adjust where their fences are located, or they may need to bring their tables in if it's snowing. I suspect organically that's going to occur, just because, you know, if it's snowing in Wisconsin, and most of us won't be out there during a heavy snowstorm, just because I wouldn't want to be sitting outside during that, but we'll, we'll communicate that some though, if they'll leave it, potentially make some adjustments. I, I know Toot and Kate, Kate brings them in every night, Hop House, and probably Kahoots are the ones we have to kind of look into a little more in detail.
Further discussion on the motion? I'll just start my two cents. I think this is a good thing. I think, you know, trying to make the best of a rough situation, and I, I hope that any, that the affected businesses, I hope the selves. But seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of extending outdoor seating areas until Dane County allows indoor restaurant and bar capacity at 100%, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? My motion passes. Alder Ricky.
That is everything for public safety.
Fantastic. We will move on to item 9C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under, as you said, item 9C1, I am making a motion to approve a professional services agreement for Project ID 2020-116.1, County Highway M/County Highway PB Intersection Expansion Survey, not to exceed $31,472.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
Thank you. This agreement is with AECOM, is for Phase 1, is for the Phase 1 elements for the County Highway PB/County Highway M Intersection Expansion due to the increased traffic volumes in that region, and more specifically inside tid 8 boundary. Agreements are split into phases, one which is field survey and two which is design to expedite the field survey prior to the winter months. Ultimately, if the survey is not completed in November, the overall project schedule could lose up to six months and/or create additional rework. Public Works staff is recommending that the contract with AECOM be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of approving a professional services agreement for Project ID 2020-116.1, County Highway M/County Highway PB Intersection Expansion Survey, and then not to exceed amount specified, say aye.
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 Opposed, no?
Aye.
Opposed, no? My motion passes. Alder Touche.
Thank you. Next item, I am making a motion to approve ordinance number 20-970, amending section 9-1-57 of the City of Verona Code of Ordinances.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
This, this amendment is more procedural. Ordinance 20-970 is to amend the Wellhead Protection Code. There is no substance change to this ordinance. The amendment is simply to add the additional of Well 6 to the ordinance and adjust figure references from the updated Wellhead Protection Plan. In, in your packet is a redline version of the section for review. Public Works staff is recommending that this ordinance be approved. This ordinance amendment be approved, excuse me.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 20-970, amending section 9-1-57 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Verona, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? My motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
That is all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 10, Old Business. First up, we have a discussion and possible action regarding a collective bargaining agreement with Local 311 of the International Association of Professional Firefighters, AFL-CIO. Before we go into closed session, Mr. Sayer, can you give us a brief overview of where we're at?
Thank you. City staff has continued to negotiate with Local 311. We've negotiated with them since November of 2019 on a new collective bargaining agreement. Staff is requesting a closed session with the Common Council to provide an update on the negotiations and to obtain feedback direction from the Common Council. We've had a few of these closed sessions, so this is kind of a continuation as part of this negotiation with the Local, Local 311.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for open session? Seeing no hands? A motion to go into closed session would be in order. Alder Kemp.
I'd like to make a motion recommending to the council that we go into closed session regarding the collective bargaining agreement with Local 311 of the International Association of Professional Firefighters, AFL-CIO. The Common Council may convene in closed session as authorized by section 19.85 sub 1 sub E of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public, excuse me, of public properties, investment of public funds, or the conducting of other specified public businesses, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. The Common Council may reconvene in an open session to take action on the closed session item.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, I think. This is, of course, a roll call vote. If the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Journey.
Aye.
Alder Kemp.
Aye.
Alder Posey.
Aye.
Alder Ricky.
Aye.
Alder Ryan.
Aye.
Alder Touche.
Aye.
Alder Cronin.
Aye.
And with that, we'll move into closed session. Mr. Sayer, I take it this is in our emails?
Correct. This was emailed to you last week. Evan's gone. Same routine as last time. You log out of this meeting, you log into the new one, and then we repeat the process the other way back. So, same as the last three, four, or five times.
Cool.
Hi.
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 A opposed note, and we adjourned at 8:16 PM. Thank you.